There are ordinances that exist to guide the way that the city is run. If somebody is doing something legal, there's no reason for me to know about it. If somebody wants to change a law, sure, then I should know about it. But there was no reason for me to know about any particular business that was coming to town. Now, maybe should we have... Maybe is the way that our ordinance set up currently, should it be changed? Probably. I think some very, very good points were made tonight. The idea that the comprehensive plan is or is not a legal document. Wayne, I would like some more clarity on that. Who invokes that? Is that... Should that... Can that be invoked?
We invoke it, but I'll touch on the comp plan in my comments.
Okay, thank you. That's a question that I would like clarification on. Is it something that we can instruct the planning department to adhere to when they're making a review? How much is a traffic impact study? Is that something that would...
I'll talk about that.
...be cost prohibitive? These are my comments that I would like answers to. I do think that the point of entering into a contract without knowing who the retailer is is not a good way for a city to run business. So some of these points that were made... (applause). These points are very good points, and I appreciate the fact that you're participating. I thank you for bringing them to our attention. Thank you. Thank you. Please come more frequently. Send emails. Put your names into the boards and commissions' applications. I'm done here November of 2016. If you live in the Eastern District and want to sit here, come talk to me. I can train you for this. The one thing that... I've been here for two terms. This is my second term. And the one thing that I thought that I think that I bring to this is that I'm a female and I have a different perspective than other people here. I'm younger than everybody, too.
That's my...
And I'm a stay-at-home mom.
Order on that one.
So, you know, I like... I thought I brought some... I think I bring some diversity to this panel. So if you want to be trained, I'm happy to... It's $100 a month. So anyway, but please, volunteer. We do appreciate you here. We're not upset over hearing what we hear, but we also want to be very, very careful that we're not breaking any laws. So if you think that we're not jumping in with you, we hate Walmarts, we're on your side, we're not going to say that. You're not going to hear that from any of us. That would be wrong and probably illegal.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Well, I had a whole lot I was gonna say, but Bud used all my time. (laughter). I'm in approximately three, approximately 100-year-old civic organizations, and we cannot mobilize and get the people out and up and down the streets like y'all did. So I find that to be very impressive, and just wanted y'all to know that. Just two things: we're not against the people, and citizens do have an input. And I've got four pages of notes here that I've taken tonight to think about, and I'd like to have some time to do that before I say anything else.
Okay. Thank you.
(applause). Mr. Murphy, no.
Yeah, first of all, I would like to thank folks for the civility with which you addressed the issues. I realize it's a very emotional thing. You have very strong feelings about it, and you express yourselves in an appropriate way, and I certainly do appreciate that. I would like to clarify one little thing that was made about a Vo-Tec school. Our students have access to a marvelous Vo-Tec school. It is New Horizons. It offers a curriculum that's far broader than we could ever offer here just for our students. And it is not just for high school students. They have an adult program as well that's very inexpensive, training people in all the various skills, even some mechanics for Henry. And we also have a very reasonably priced community college where you can pursue those same kind of skills. So I think that issue is pretty well taken care of, and we certainly couldn't offer anything to compare with New Horizons just for our students because of the broad curriculum that they do have there. I want to address another issue that Councilwoman Crawford did, and that's about the VEPCO burying the lines. I live on Sandy Bay Drive, which you may know is right on the river, and we've had numerous outings. Most of our houses there have lines coming from the main line underground to our houses. Well, last Friday in the storm, one of the lines came down and set a marsh on fire, two doors down from me, and we were without power for about three hours. So I would be delighted to see that entire action take place because that was just a bit inconvenient. And I want to note that I hope doesn't upset people, but this is one of those facts of life that our form of government has a funny little caveat called the free enterprise system. We have to tread very carefully when we are dealing with anything that actually violates the privileges of people to exercise that. So please understand that we don't have the grand gavel to say, "Nope, can't do." We even got some comments from people who said, "Well, it'd be nice if we had a Trader Joe's or a Fresh Market." Somebody even suggested a Kroger. Now, if you want some competition, bring a Kroger in and see what happens. So I just want to mention that, you know, we do have to follow the rule of law, and as difficult as that may seem at times, we don't have a big choice in that.
Buddy?
I just want to thank everybody for coming. We really do appreciate the input. I'd just like to make a comment about what was mentioned about the legacy. It's a shame that all those wetlands that you want to save were created by the Virginia Department of Highways. In a money-saving effort in the 1970s when they built that road, instead of paying to haul the spoil off from the ditch they dug, they cast it on the side, and it blocked the drainage for the property. And the developer actually tried to create the wetlands on his site. It wasn't us that had the idea not to do that. It was our infinite federal government and state government that said, "No, you cannot do that. You've got to buy off-site mitigation." So here again, it's not the city council asking that developer to go mitigate in Gloucester. It's our wonderful federal government and state government telling him he has to. On a lighter note, we served a record number of people at the last food bank last Tuesday, 66 families, that equates to 216 people. So... (applause). I want to thank the fine folks from Tabernacle Church for helping us. They did a great job, and it's not an easy task. We have a lot of stuff to unload and hand out, and they did it joyfully, and it was very rewarding.
And you're still on the board there at New Horizons, is that correct?
I am on the New Horizons Foundation.
So anybody who wants to know about...
That is an absolute wonderful organization, and we couldn't duplicate that if we wanted to. It's a great organization, and I just wish the school systems that we serve were more aware of our services. And as far as citizen input, I'd much rather you pick up the phone and call me because I am that kind of person. I'm just too old to deal with internet, but my phone... My number's in the book. It's published by a lot of people at the last meeting, and I don't mind picking up the phone and calling me. I'd much rather talk to you than try to figure out what I'm trying to say in an email, what you're trying to say in an email. So...
Okay. Very good. Henry?
I defer my time to Bud. (laughter). Well, unlike Tracy, I enjoy reading the emails and Facebook late at night. I stay up. It's good entertainment, and actually, some of it's very informative. We learn a lot. I got on council two years ago, and I was excited about getting on council. I was excited to know all these people would be coming to the meetings and showing up at meetings, and lo and behold, nobody comes. Nobody comes. It was disappointing. This is encouraging to see the community input that we're receiving for this, but it was disheartening when I got elected and nobody was coming to the meetings. Someone said, talking about keeping business in Pecosin. I cannot emphasize that enough. Since I've been on council, I think we have opened 14 to 15 businesses. I believe 12 have closed. One of the major grocery stores in the community is... Three years in a row have declined revenue streams of the city.
I bet they have.
Three years in a row. If you think the corporate office will continue to see that decline happening, you're mistaken. They're a business. If we don't support these grocery stores, these small stores, mom-and-pop shops, some of these are, they'll be gone anyway. So if you want to see your businesses stay in Pecosin, I think some of us better be shopping a little bit more in Pecosin. And it's easy to say what we're gonna do, and then we don't do it. And I see... I'm guilty of it myself. I'll see folks at Walmart down in York County. I'll see folks at the Farm Fresh in York County, Krogers in York County, and I don't see them in Pecosin. I'm guilty of it myself. So all of us together, if we want to make our community stronger, we better make it stronger. If not, we will lose businesses, and it won't be nobody's fault but our own. It won't be Walmarts. It won't be anybody else's but our own. So I hope to see some more people in these shops when I'm in there myself. You know, as I am... A lot of folks know I'm certainly anti-big government, and the government is supposed to be for the people, by the people. And I really believe the people have spoken in this community, loud and clear, and I think we all got a message. I am hoping and hopeful that with council, that we can see what we can do and look at some changes that can be made and implemented so that people have a little bit more voice. I would rather have more voice on what we're doing in the city. And I am hopeful that we can do something along those lines so that we can have more input, so that people's voices can truly be heard. And that's what government's all about. Y'all put us up here, and you put us up here. I heard people say that the landscape, the political landscape, can change, and y'all can take us away from here. Good news is, I'm not running again, and my seat will be open, too. So anybody can have it, and be prepared to get what comes along with it. A lot of us have been very positive, and I have tried to respond to every email, with the exception of this week, that I received over the last couple of weeks. This week, I'm a little bit slow. I'm a little bit behind. And I've tried to respond, even to some of the negative emails that I receive, very negative, pointing fingers, name-calling, to the point I just decided not to respond to those emails. But I understand the passion of this, but I do hope that with council, Mr. Moore can find out what we can do in our legal rights because the components of what we're looking at now do not match up with our comprehensive plan. I read the comprehensive plan over and over again myself. (applause). I'm as concerned as each and every one of y'all are about everything you've talked about tonight. Trust me, every single one of us up here has the same concerns. We're all like you people, except we took a chance to run for these offices to help make our communities better. That's what we got up here for. We don't want to make them worse. We want to make them better. And I am so appreciative of the people's voices being heard, and I'm hearing you loud and clear. And I do hope, as Tracy alluded to, I hope more people are getting involved. There's a lot of room for people to be involved in this city, and a lot of people are. But I hear you, and again, I implore Mr. Moore to do what he can to look into this, to see where we are, what can be done, so we can try to be more in line with our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate everybody coming out here tonight. I really do. Great things are said. I've been doing this a while, and I will tell you that I serve with a very open and impassioned group of council people that think about Pecosin every day. I can tell you that. Three things that disturbed me tonight about what I heard. There was a lot of comments, and very, very much down the wrong lane, if you think Pecosin is making bad financial decisions. I think if you miss the part that we are a AAA bond-rated community, the money for the property is not a make-or-break-buy for the city of Pecosin, okay? If you think that we are in some kind of bad financial straits, I will tell you that we have... The reason we have that AAA bond rating is because we have a good emergency fund, and we make our budget, and we pay our budget, and we don't borrow against plans like the federal government and the state government. So don't ever think that your city is not financially stable. I want you to leave here with that tonight. If you have any questions, I don't know if Teresa's still here or not, but we're open anytime if you want to, and we're audited each year. So that is just false, and I appreciate that you just know that and then find out about it. Don't just accuse. That the EDA is somehow the bad guys. I think Tracy talked about the lanes of government, okay? There are lanes of government. When government crosses those lanes, that's when we really start getting in trouble. When every board and every commission is responsible for all of it, that's when you get in trouble. If we start saying, "You know what, EDA? You need to look at the environmental plans." That's not the wetlands board's lane. Or, "EDA, you need to look at the comprehensive plan." That's planning commission's lane, okay? It's when all commissions feel like they've got to make that decision based on all of those things. That is why we have the separate boards and commissions. The next thing that bothered me is somehow that they said that city council exuded no control over those. That's not right because we either appoint the people to those boards, which understand that once we appoint them, we give them some freeway, right? We don't appoint them and say, "If you vote this way, you'll do this," or "If you vote this way, we'll take you off." That's not what we do, okay? So that's how we control those boards and commissions. And last is that there was some type of secret... Well, it's not last. Secret service and secret society in government. I'll tell you, it's a funny thing because I think most of us up here have said, "Boy, there's a secret society out there in the community right now, and we don't know who they are." Okay? So just understand that that feeling goes both ways when you start, you know, saying things like that. There is no secret. I think you could have found me in Farm Fresh 55 times in the last two, three weeks, and that's because I go in there for one product at a time. I'm not smart enough to go in there and get them all. What I would tell you is the comprehensive plan... Let's talk about that for a minute. The comprehensive plan is a guide for the city. It really is. The property that we're talking about, okay? And then I'm going to come back to... Because nobody's giving you an answer to the one question that you really want to know, which is, where are we? Okay? The comprehensive plan is a guide, and it is a guide that basically rules how we zone properties. I think somebody said that comprehensive plan was put in place in 2008, I think was the last time, and is good through 2028. Well, we revise it every five years. We can revise it as a point of order at any time. That goes through the planning commission, la, da, da. We can revise it and say, "Hey, it doesn't say the right thing." The land that we're talking about, that a grocery store wants to land on, was owned in 1995, not 2008. So it carries that zoning. It basic... The comp plan allows us to basically say, "This is where we want this type of zoning. This is where we want that type of zoning." Okay? And that is... That's how the comprehensive plan goes into it. I can find language that contradicts itself within the same comp plan. If you've read it, you'll see it. There's language in there in one chapter, and it'll say the exact opposite in the next chapter. It's a very... That's because when we build it, we do various community... Various groups build the various chapters, right? And we don't catch all the nuances of it. So let me talk about... Bud talked about it, and I promised not to talk quite as long as Bud. But what have I seen? And I'm gonna go back to what Bud said. When I was a young man, and I've lived here all my life, and, you know, I'll probably die here as well, but the small stores that he talked about were here. When Food... When Farm Fresh was built, there was a turnout like this in Pecosin, and city government is a different place, a different time. Those stores didn't necessarily fail because of Farm Fresh. Some of them probably did. Most of them just left when the family left, okay? In other words, when the matriarch of the store, the patriarch of the store, decided to go out of business, it failed. I will tell you the two grocers that you have in town are not as financially stable as you think. One is not a player in Pecosin city government or helps the city of Pecosin in any given way. One is a great partner, and I'm not going to call them out. One's a great partner, and one is not a partner at all, okay? There's nothing that this council can do if Walmart decided to buy out Food Lion and land their store there. They can do that tomorrow. They can buy an empty store. So let's talk about when Food Lion decided to build a new place, and we had an empty grocer there for a while there in the other place, which is now Taylor's, right? Okay? So change has a way of coming around, going around, okay? And what... Supposedly, the power of the US government, the power of the people, is normally meant that we are adaptive, that we can overcome challenges and hardships, and that we can create solutions that create value to overcome certain things. I would say that we're basically by saying, "We don't want..." We want the government to protect us from ourselves. That's not where we really want to go. I don't think you'd like it in five years when it started to build on itself and we say, "Nope, can't do that there. Can't do this there." Now, I'm not a Walmart proponent. My wife will tell you that I hate to go in Walmart. You know, when I go in there, I still see many of the faces that I see here tonight, okay? I see them, and I see many of our staff in there. So what I would tell you is, they're a business. They're not the death knell of the city of Pecosin. The people are the death knell of the city of Pecosin if you cannot adapt. I am not saying that Walmart's coming. So where are we? Okay? Walmart saw, and the developer saw, and there's a lot of people in this room that are probably taking a lot of notes from the developer, right? Okay? They saw that the policy of trying to take that through a government was not going to be well-received, okay? Basically, when they said, "Well, what do you think?" I said, "I don't think you have a chance in heck of passing a zoning ordinance." Okay? So they go off and say, "Well, we'll think about that." And so they come out with a buy-right development plan. So what does buy-right mean? Buy-right development plan means five of the six parcels, and this is something that if you got an email from me, I basically gave you right up front. Five of the six parcels are already zoned and can support the store as proposed, okay? So what can council do about that? Okay? I'll come back to that. What we can't do is change the zoning of that like this and then have another arm of the Pecosin city government, have a contract with somebody, and then renig on the contract, right? All right? So think about that. If I did that to you, I was going to say, "You can build your business here." This is Henry's committee says, "You can build your business here, and I'm going to sell you this property, and you've done all this planning, you've dumped all this money," and then Vice Mayor's committee comes back and says, "Oh, we changed that." Okay? You know, how long do you think we'd last in court? How long? Ask yourself that question. All right. So what can we do? You've asked one simple thing. Can we look at a thing that says, "In the future, can we..." Can the Pecosin city councils change the ordinance to say, "315,000 square feet requires councilmatic action." I'm okay to start that process. Does anybody here have a problem with that? Okay? So seeing a consensus at council, I'd remand that to the planning commission to start that process, okay? So that answers your question of what can we do and how... But how fast we can do it, remember that that's... Government's not as fast as you think, and we can't do special meetings because that would be that secret society that you were talking about, right? So we have to do everything above the table, full view of the press. That's the way government operates. All right. Let me see if I got anything else.
Yeah, you had...
Hold on. I'm not done yet.
No.
I'm like Bud, okay? If you feel like that if Walmart moved into the city, you'd move out, well, you know, I don't think that's... I don't think that's really... If that bothers you that bad, do it. But I took another view from a risk standpoint. I do risk management. You know, I think about, okay, what, if not here, where? Y'all looked at the zoning in York County across the line?
Looked at it.
No, what I'm saying is, okay, so now answer that question. If you've looked at it... I understand. But if Walmart... If a grocer moves, would you rather have them in town or just beyond your city line?
We don't want them there.
Okay? You don't want them there either, right? I got that. All right. Whoa, stop it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry I asked the question. All right? Sorry, I...
(inaudible) knock out any other businesses.
Ma'am, I get you, and I'm back with your... I'm back with your impassioned plea, but you've got to realize that maybe York County does want this. And somebody said something about Pecosin wants... Pecosin wants, you know, keep our tax dollars. That's actually York County. Keep it in the county. That's what's on all the county stores, okay? It's not Pecosin. We're a free market. That's keep it in the county. We're not York County. All right? So just realize that already you've got zoning there. Just think about what it is that you're asking because if they could show up tomorrow and buy out an existing store or get here in any other way... Not saying that I don't think there's a market for three grocery stores, but that's Gene Huntsrop. (applause). But I didn't think that the car wash by the pharmacy had a market either, and they are blowing it out the window. I thought that was the worst location, and I've been wrong. So that's why I don't do business decisions. We do government decisions. We keep it down the right lane, and we make sure that we make the decisions by law, okay? We're not rogue. We don't get to go across against Virginia State statute, no matter what anybody thinks. We cannot violate Virginia State law, and we cannot violate federal law. I think what you're asking us to do is right on that edge, but we will go look and see what it is that is possible, okay? But there's no promises. This is not a smoking... This is not your silver bullet, okay? Just understand, there's no emergency in zoning. You can't pass an emergency zoning measure. It's not... Zoning is not an emergency, okay? So understand what it is that you're asking. Try and keep the communications up. We'll see what we can do to dissuade this, but I can tell you, the more that, in my opinion, the more hatred that you put out, you know how it entrenches people? You put their back up against the wall?
It's not the people that are talking.
No, but I understand, but...
We can't control them.
Right. Well, anyway, bottom line is, when, you know, you got the signs and all that stuff, sometimes it really makes somebody else come to the table and say, "You know what? I'm going to prove them wrong." I would have told you, we probably could have handled this much more quietly with just a few phone calls. But...
I need to praise... I want to praise you. You're putting it out there on the internet. Can you do that?
Yeah. All right. No ma'am. All right, so...
Putting all the updates on this on the website.
Yeah. All right, so a motion to adjourn? Jean?
Jane.
Motion to adjourn?
Ma'am.
Jane? One comment before you adjourn, okay? To you people in it home, I apologize for getting windy, okay?
(laughter).
But I'm passionate about this city. I really am, and I understand that. And as I told you, we were able to work through things and ask about involving everybody. This is hard for us, and you brought up some very good points tonight. You did. I've got a couple pages of notes here, too. Okay, I've got a couple pages of notes here, too, just like Tracy, okay? And you gave me some things to think about that we, that we will do our best to do better. And what I tried to say when I was, when I was talking about legislation, and I may not have made that real clear, is that I want to give you as few rules as I possibly can, but I really want to solve a problem with the ones that we make. I don't want to create ones that are not intended. And so, with that, Gene, I will shut up, okay? And you can close the meeting.
I move with adjourn.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Speaker, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tracy Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Vice, I'm sorry, Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
And Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
The motion can't be voted on.
And we are adjourned.
I didn't have any...
She just blew it.
I didn't have any, I didn't have any sheeps.
She was going down. She was going straight down the line.
You just blew it.
You!